Sorry for the delay. This is the Town of Eastchester.
Yeah, we're good.
We're the Town of Eastchester Planning Board Meeting of February 27, 2020. If everyone would rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
(inaudible).
Mr. Philip Nemisak.
Present.
Jim Bonano's present and Louis Campania.
Present.
So there's three of us this evening. Mark Cunningham could not be here. I'll just run through the items on the agenda. One is a continued public hearing on application 1942, Five Ray Place. The second is also continued, 118 Brook Street. And there's a new project at 30 Lake Shore Drive. The adjourned items are the application for 249 Main Street. So the first application is Five Ray Place. Before we start that, I just wanted to bring up a few points. It's a big application here. So we want to keep it a little bit organized. So what we're going to do now is we're just going to hear the materials that have been brought by the applicant. We're going to listen to our consultants' comments on some of the items, in particular, traffic and civil reports. And we're just going to collect information right now so we can understand it. I know you guys were here before and we appreciate that, but we have to take a new look, a new fresh look, since there's a lot of items that have been put forth that all of us have to pay close attention to. So it's going to take a while to run through this application and understand everything. The board member is going to see if there's any additional information that we'd like you to bring forth. And then, once we get to that, we'll be ready in a position to determine how to go forward. So right now, it's more fact-finding is the way I see it.
And you're also going to continue with the public hearing?
Of course. And of course, there'll be an opportunity for the public to comment once we're all done so we can take note of their concerns.
Yeah, and I wanted to add and apologize that neither Mr. Bonano nor I were at the October 24 meeting at which this application was initially presented to this board. And we have a brand-new board member. This is his second meeting. I guess he's not brand-new. He's still pretty new, who was not on the board back on October 24. So none of the three of us has seen this before. I know, I certainly have reviewed the minutes, but I can't say that I reviewed the minutes with a site plan in front of me. So this is a sizable project and we're not going to rush it through. We're going to take our time. We're going to make sure we understand it. We're going to make sure that the residents of our good town have the opportunity to comment on it. And once that's done, we'll move forward as we usually do.
You're up.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Ed Vogel with Warshower, Melussy Warshower Architects, and I've been the elected person to kick this off. We're here today with our client and attorney and civil engineering crew, which all in turn will be introduced. I hope you don't mind. I'm going to move forward in front of the boards. The board we had up in front was an image, the front elevation of Five Ray Place. And we'll go back toward the end of the presentation. We'll talk about the facades, but this gives you a first glimpse of the project as a cover sheet. Thank you, Rick. Our next sheet demonstrates where the project is located. Here is Route 22, White Plains Road, and then Brook Street, signalized intersection. Ray Place comes off of Brook Street and terminates into a parking lot that's associated with a former supermarket. Our project site sits on Ray Place.
And that former supermarket is once again going to be a supermarket because I've seen that there's work going forward. And in fact, this board approved an application for De Chico &amp; Sons to do significant renovations. So I actually went by the property, not last week, in preparation in part for this hearing, but also to take a look at what was going on at the supermarket. And it looks like it's kind of down to the studs. I'd expect it'll be up and running. I guess it's pure conjecture, but it does look like it will be up and running certainly before this project is done.
You are correct. We understand the same thing. Right? Let me go ahead and next sheet. So here we have the site located on the project in a little bit larger venue, or at least a board. Just wanted to note that there is a commercial district around Brook and Route 22. And then there's a residential district that's a little bit further to the south and to the west of the project. The zone that we're in is RB. In RB, we've elected to use the M-700 Zone, which is multifamily. And it fits the site, ends up being a good transitional element from the commercial areas to the residential. And there is also another multifamily building across the street on Ray Place to the west. On this zone, on this sheet, you'll notice also there's interesting topography. If you've been to the site, and as you say you have, Ray Place climbs to a plateau. We sit somewhere on that rise, toward the upper part of that rise. We have situated the building in a way that we've met the zoning setbacks. And we've also included aerial fire apparatus. As you mentioned, we appeared in October. Since then, we've had at least two group meetings with staff to review certain elements for this project within the Town of Eastchester. And we've also had multiple conversations with the town consultants. There is an entry drive to what we call the first floor. And then we come up toward that southern portion of the site with a second entry drive. The reason for the two drives is that there is topography change existing on the site of retaining walls. And we're utilizing those retaining walls in our design, trying to minimize the disturbance on the site and disturbance to the surrounding properties. Because we're near the R6 Zone, which is the residential zone that I mentioned earlier, there is a buffer. I want to point that out to you. The buffer creates an arc of 150 feet, and it does bisect our property and it does bisect the building. We'll talk about that a little bit later.
What is that buffer?
It's like, I call it an overlay. You can call it a buffer.
Yeah. I just want to clarify, it's, no offense, it's neither an overlay or a buffer.
Okay.
Basically, because those terms have different meanings. Basically, what our zoning law says is anything within 150 feet of a one or two-family residential district has to meet different requirements. So it's basically because this falls within that setback.
It falls within the legal requirement.
Yes, and then there's, because it falls within that setback, then there's different requirements for height.
Got it.
Thank you. So here we have our floor plates. And the floor plates start in the upper-left corner of the sheet, which is that lowest level where you would have the drive coming in. And we're utilizing the existing drive that's there now to a parking field. We have some parking. And in particular to note is that we have our entry to the building where we would rise up to the residential units. On the second level of the building, there's a lobby as well that continues, but the second level of the building is basically parking, which comes in from the southern part of the site, which is the higher elevation. There are two levels of parking. They are not interconnected. Then our third and fourth floor plans are similar, and so is the fifth floor. The reason why we broke out the fifth floor bit is because of the shape of our building, and we'll describe that when we get to the elevations. But the units are 21 in total. We have 18 one-bedroom and three two-bedroom. This here represents at the bottom of the sheet just a typical site section, where you then can see the existing retaining walls and how the building is nested into those two retaining walls, and how the first two levels are parking and then the next three levels are residences. A diagram off on the right side of the sheet shows the, I guess, the setback from the residential, and it really highlights how we establish grade planes from topography around the building. Typical units we see here enlarged, so you can then analyze them a little bit closer, but for the most part, they comprise of one-bedroom units. We have a two-bedroom design as well. There's only three of those. Being with the site topography and where we are in the Town of Eastchester and climbing up on the knoll that is existing there made a unique site, and it has opportunities to be visible from all sides. So we've designed the building as frontages from all four. As you can see from the front elevation and from the south elevation, we've held very strong corners. The building is divided with a base and then a body and a top. The top is a mansard shape. There are articulation that helps define the horizontal stratification of the building. Then we introduced some rhythms with a bay that works its way across the facade. In particular, we want to hold the corners of the building. So if you noticed, we'll have some strong elements at the corner of the building. Material-wise, we have a brick. We have a metal roof. And then we have a slightly rusticated base to the building. The building has human scale to it and a residential feel. The materials that we've selected also provide a bit of formality and stateliness to the Just to describe from the site plan, first floor, entry for parking, lobby, as we would read on the facade. And then, as we work our way to the south side of the building, this is that upper level of parking, and one would enter in that center bay.
There are three residential floors, right, with seven units apiece?
Three.
Yeah.
One, two, three.
So that, but five total floors if you count the two garage floors, right?
Correct.
And so that second, on the illustration on the top half here, the second floor, even though it looks like the third, fourth, and fifth, that's just decorative. That's a garage behind that, correct?
It is garage behind it.
Yeah.
Yes, we brought the architecture down at that level. You can see how we've brought that architecture, that vernacular, around to the rear and then to the north facade again. They're holding strong corners, having a rhythm of bays, and then the stratification horizontally from base to body to crown or roof. We do have some renderings for you. This is a rendering from Ray Place, looking at the front facade. It's just a three-dimensional image with some shadow work. And Rick, would you bring the material board and maybe place it on the floor on the front Thank you. So this is a representation of the materials that we're looking for?
Hey, Gary.
Looking to use. Can you see that? Or do you want us to raise it up?
Gary, could you zoom down on the board? Thank you.
There we go. So we have a white brick for the body of our building, of the facade. Down below, we have a rusticated limestone looking, which is the base of our building. Our roof panels are diamond or scallop, and they would be a silverish metallic look. And then the architectural elements for the bays would be a fipon or a white trim. And then we have black windows identified with railings in front of those windows. The units themselves are light and airy with lots of glass to bring that in. The windows are almost from the floor and are not quite to the height of the ceilings. We have a second elevation or rendering. This one is from Route 22, not far south from the intersection of Brook Street. You can see in the foreground the CVS Pharmacy and how this would sit on that knoll as you work your way up to the upper platform or plateau of the area. that I'd come back to a few items. And those items are in relationship to some of the zoning variances that the project would require. The zoning variances can be broken into, basically, there's nine in total, but they can be grouped by category a little bit. So what I wanted to do is just discuss them as I have mentally grouped them. First I'd like to discuss is impervious coverage. The impervious coverage is slightly over. It's a little more than 2% over the 70% that's permitted, so we're up roughly at about 72% in total. That's one variance. The second variance is regarding parking spaces. The project, based on the mix of units, would require 33. We're providing 31, so it's an ask of two parking spaces. Then also related to parking is backup and maneuvering aisle width. The code states 25 feet, the zoning code that is, and we're proposing 24 feet. That's a one-foot reduction. The next group of variances, and I call it a group, deals with height. First is going to be the base zone, which is the M-700. That base zone, building height by stories, and these are all related, right? So stories is the first item, and for height, a maximum of four, we're proposing five. So that's one additional story. Then there's building height, so it's measured dimensionally from the grade plane to the top of the parapet. Maximum would be 45 because of the one story, it's additional 10 feet. We're a little over 55 feet in height. And then the next piece of height related to that is regarding bulkheads. So since we are an additional story, the bulkhead height would be 55 feet in total, and we're roughly 65 feet. Again, 10 feet for that one additional story. Regarding the setback from the R6 residential zone, which we talked about, there too, a grouping of three relating to height. The first one is that there's two and a half stories permitted, and on that portion of the site, the building only is four stories. So that would be an additional one and a half stories of height. Then regarding distance, measured from grade plane, it would be 30 feet maximum, but we're greater than that. We're at 50 feet. And then bulkhead height, again, the same related to height, would be 40 feet as a maximum, and we're close to 60 feet. So those summarize the variances that would be required. At this point, that concludes the architectural portion of the presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them now or later on. Otherwise, I'll turn this over to JMC.
All right, just had a question.
And Jim Ryan, yes.
I had a question, two questions. Just in the existing retaining wall?
Yes.
Did you say that's being incorporated into the design or it's being removed?
They are being incorporated into the design.
Can you point out on the plan again exactly where that is?
Sure. Would you pull out the site plan?
Yes.
Yes.
It's like right in the middle.
So there are existing retaining walls that reside. I'm going to go from the low end of the site to the high end of the site. So at the north end of the site, there's a retaining wall that hooks around here, and that's for the parking lot in CVS. There is an existing parking field, which can be demonstrated when we talk about the site engineering. There is a second retaining wall that comes across the site, comes in at an angle, and then works its way right across and bisects the two parking fields that exist presently and then hooks around to here. So our elevator lobby and parking all relate to that existing wall. Those are the two major walls on the site.
Great. I only had one other comment about the fire access. I guess you're going to look into the fire. Okay.
You want to handle fire access?
No, no, when we get to it, I think it's in your package. I say I think it's in your package. And your lobby, your main lobby, though, is on Ray, right? The entrance to the building is on Ray.
Our lobby is on grade at the first floor.
Right.
And then we rise up through the building.
So your panels through those doors, right? So your fire panel's located in that lobby?
It would be at that location, correct.
That's what I was getting at.
Mm-hmm. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Jim Ryan from JMC.
Sure. I'm going to work from the podium. Oh, you're going to work from the podium. Thank you, thank you, Ed. For the record, again, my name is James Ryan. I'm principal with the firm JMC. We're the engineering consultants for the applicant. First of all, related specifically to fire, we've had the advantage since we've submitted a number of months ago of sitting down with staff on a number of issues. And Captain Pinteball was very, very helpful and helped us work through particularly the issue of access, because the building's over 30 feet. There are very specific requirements in place that we have to accommodate the ladder trucks here, too. And there are certain state provisions that require access to be of a certain width so that the trucks can come in, put their outriggers down, and provide for aerial access. So one of the reasons why one of the driveways, and Mr. Vogel had alluded to that, is 26 feet. So that's the southern driveway, which I'll point out is actually 26 feet, so that meets that requirement, so that the safety of the vehicles coming in, it's a flat area, too, so they'll have ample access to the rooftop of the building. So Captain Pinteball, we've had an opportunity to work very closely with him. And those issues and some of the other issues related to hydrant locations and so on, too, we're hopefully just finishing up that. But we've been in close communication with him on that particular issue. Also, as well, Mr. Tremelli has been very helpful, too, as we work through some of the other issues in stormwater, as Mr. Greeley has on traffic. So I'll just briefly take you some of what we've done on that, too. Again, as Ed had indicated, there's two driveway access. We're taking advantage on Brook Street because, or on our roadway, Ray Place specifically, because there is a slope on that, too. There are natural grade changes and natural plateaus. So if you've been out there, you realize there's an upper parking lot and a lower parking lot, both being impervious areas. So his building has taken into account that grade change, which fit very well with his building. So we do have those two lower levels that allow us to access without a lot of grading, lower level for parking, and then the second level, a little higher up on the south side for our parking access as well. So it allows to accommodate the onsite parking as opposed to off-street parking. So again, the fire access has been dealt with, too. And in terms of the final attributes of where the placement of certain things knocks boxes and anything that they might need in terms of access and fire provisions, those will be worked out architecturally as we continue our discussions with staff. We did do, in terms of the traffic and accommodation of the traffic on Ray Place and at the intersection of Brook Street, we did submit a traffic study for that, too. And Mr. Greeley will comment on that. Traffic volumes are relatively low during the peak days, peak weekdays. On AM is seven vehicles total contribution to the traffic. Peak weekdays, PM, 10 vehicles. And then the other peak on Saturday, mid-days, a total of 10 vehicles is what's being projected. So that was put into our calculations in terms of our overall traffic impacts. And I know Mr. Greeley will talk to that, too. We do recognize that the grocery store will be coming online, so there is, as I understand, some additional, what's called a sensitivity analysis, that will have to supplement our traffic analysis with, too. And I know Mr. Greeley will talk to that specifically. There are two major changes that are required here for utilities. We have extensions of our utilities down to Brook Street for the water. We're coordinating with Suez Water. So there's a 190 linear foot extension from our development down to Brook Street. They've indicated that there is adequate water service to provide for the development, but we will continue to work with Suez on that particular extension. That will require, because it's a public main, input from Eastchester as well as the Health Department, too. So we'll be working through those agencies on that. As well, we require a sewer extension down to Brook Street, too. Run along Brook Street, approximately 220-foot extension onto Brook Street. We are working through issues relating to I&amp;I. It's an ongoing issue throughout Westchester County. But we're going to be working with Mr. Tremelli and with Margaret's office, too, as well as your DPW, to try to address those issues in terms of our additional contribution sewer to the system. So we're, again, working through those issues, too. We have some more discussions to have, so we'll continue on that road, on that particular issue. Stormwater, essentially the site right now is all impervious or predominantly impervious because it's all parking. It is under the threshold for requiring a full stormwater pollution prevention plan. Nonetheless, we have to require and are being required to provide detention on the property, mitigate any impact or overload on your existing storm system. We are providing that onsite, Rick, if you just want to point out. The current plan calls for storage systems essentially within the building footprint in two areas to account for water quantity control. So that's rate and volume controls coming through our underground system. So we feel that we can accommodate that. There are some questions as it relates to, again, it has to do with the grocery store property, too, because their water does flow through this property, too. So we're starting to work on and trying to work out some issues related to how that's being accommodated either through our site or around our site. So we have provided a stormwater report to your consultants. We continue to work with them. We have other things that we provide on a technical basis on lighting and so on, too. All of that material is in front of them. And we do appreciate Margaret has helped to coordinate a number of meetings with staff, and we've been allowed to have some direct contact with the consultants, too, to try to work out the nuances of the technical side of things. So I think we're getting to a good point on that, too. We had a previous comment letter. We tried to address most of those comments. We're still collecting some information, some new survey information, but I think we're well on our way to, you know, hopefully satisfying the concerns of your consultants as we go through the process. Here to answer any specific questions you have. I know Ed, I think, did a good job in terms of the architecture and the design, so we're happy to help.
I just wanted to comment that this really is a very steep hill, Ray Place. I mean, it doesn't quite, it certainly doesn't come through on the bird's-eye view. but it is a very steep hill, and it remains a steep hill. And there's, as you pointed out, there's a residentially, a complex just to the west, I guess, of, on Ray Place itself. So another comment I had, and I'll come back to the supermarket because I've shopped at some of the DeChico and Sons, and there's one in Ardsley and another one at Archmont or somewhere over on Palmer Road. And both of those are absolutely packed whenever I've been there. And I'm expecting that the Eastchester store will be a larger store. I suspect, especially initially, it's going to get quite a bit of volume, a lot more than the Acme had before it. But that's an issue, that's a traffic issue that you said you're going to account for.
It is, it is, yes.
And otherwise, I had a question. I don't know if Jay, you can answer this, but I noticed, this is just a curiosity. It doesn't really, I noticed that Brook Street is referenced as Brookridge Avenue parenthetically in some of these maps. Is that an old name for the street?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
His expert opinion.
Okay, because that's just from a, as a lifelong Eastchester resident, I had never seen that.
Probably came from the survey and is probably referencing a very old map, yeah.
So, you know, maybe we all learned something about the great history of Eastchester. All right, those are my comments for the moment. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a question. I see that there's a bit of trench work being done coming up Ray Place from Brook Street or Brookridge.
Yes.
And there is a residential multifamily building directly to the west. Is the intent here or what you're proposing going to impact that entire width?
Well, you mean in terms of the access to developments across the street?
Yes.
Well, I think there will, you know, as we continue on the process, too, there'll be no doubt a requirement for a management plan and how we're going to maintain access because it's not just access for the residents themselves, but emergency access has to be maintained. You know, we are ultimately going to chop up that road a bit. There's already a request from your consultant, a suggestion that'll end up in the plan to have to repave that after we're completed. But emergency service, access at all times, you know, logistics plan will have to be provided at some point in the process to ensure that safety is maintained at all times.
Thank you.
So can you just go back to the fire truck for a second?
Sure.
So I have the C-310 open that shows the access.
Okay.
Do you have it there, or?
C-310, John.
We could just look at that. I mean, they showed two routes, right? So the aerial truck comes in and goes to the upper lot. Yeah, you could just point out. It enters and it goes to the upper lot, right? Pulls in there. I imagine that's how they're going, that's their first approach, right?
Yeah, so they'll come in, they'll sweep in here. They can set their outriggers.
Right, and it's the twenty-six feet is to set the outriggers.
Twenty-six feet is the minimum requirement for the width. So that's the width of the road here. And then you have to be less than thirty feet from that point, too. So it's the twenty-six plus the additional length, which is probably about sixteen additional feet there.
Right, and the reason I ask is I thought fire trucks want to pull in, get out, and go straight to the panel.
Yeah, so what the code does is it requires them to be able to pull in, set the outriggers, and then have a mechanism to back out and then go. So it's very specific in, I guess it's the fire code, Jay. You probably know more about that, but it's in the fire code of what we had to do. We struggled with that early on because, as you know, Brook Street is very steep. You know, where would we actually place that? But I think there was a redesign from the original plan. So if you saw the original plan, actually to shift the building, reduce the overall size of the building so that we can accommodate that on the plan, too, so.
No, I understand the movement of the truck. My question is, the panel is in the front lobby, right? So don't they want to access that as soon as they pull in?
I would have s-
As far as they didn't make a comment, I guess it just doesn't matter, right?
Well, again, our conversations never end with fire departments, too, so we'll-
Yeah, I'm just, but if they, it changes things, a little bit.
So we'll bring that up and talk to them about any concerns they might have on that.
And I'm going back to the retaining wall, too. On that plan, whereabouts is the retaining wall? It's-
Can you show that?
Yeah, I, the one that bisects the building.
Yeah, that's this one that comes down here.
So that retaining wall, you're done. You're going to take out the parking at the top, take out the parking in the bottom, leave that wall, build around it, correct? Is that the plan?
Is that exactly true? I want to make sure we have that right. In terms of the wall construction.
So on the lowest level, this is in plan, right? So you can see the retaining wall comes across, runs right across, and we ended the building at the wall. And then the wall continues around the front, so that will stay.
Right.
So this is the lower part of the parking. And then the upper part is just going to bridge over the top.
Right, so the, where the fire truck is right there is on the south side of the retaining wall.
It's on the south side. Yeah, the, I'm not a fireman, so I apologize for not being able to answer your question directly. But they may come with one truck, they may come with two trucks. The fire chief may be there initially before a fire truck arrives. He would then have direct access to the lobby, right? So I, this, we will continue the conversation with the fire inspector and just verify that.
The wall will be inspected and make sure it has adequate capacity to support the fire truck and all that kind of stuff.
Yes. Does that answer your question where the walls are?
Yeah, I was just, I'm an engineer, so I always think about fire trucks and loads and all that kind of stuff.
Okay.
Sounds like you've got it. Thank you.
I have another question, and it relates to the size of this project. And I know we looked at a project for some number of years that never was developed on Summerfield, not too far from here.
Very familiar.
And you're well familiar with it. And in fact, there are some elements of this building that quite closely resemble some of the elements of that building. I know one of the, and there was quite a, how should we say? A representation of opinion by the people in the north end of Eastchester about the Summerfield application. And, you know, the massing was a big issue there, a number of different issues.
Right.
The, one thing the Summerfield property had going for it was it was at the bottom, although it was, you know, so it was a bottom of the hill, but it was a bigger size than this.
Yeah, much more, I think, three times the units, sure.
Yeah, and the sheer volume. But in terms of height, and I know a number of the variances that are sought here relate to height.
They do.
And many of them relate to height because they're within that hundred and fifty-foot radius from the residential, what is it, the R5 residential. We have this one, I guess it's R2 illustration of, from the CVS parking lot at the corner of Route 22 and Brook Street that shows-
Could you put that up so that we could get a better picture?
We have this one illustration, which I think is, you know, goes a ways towards giving us a representation of what the massing might look like. Is there a way that you can expand upon that? Because I think massing is going to be an issue for this. It is on a hill, and it's toward the top of the hill. And, you know, this is helpful, seeing this particular illustration. But can you give us, and I know we've seen, I think we saw this with Summerfield, we've seen it with Jackson Street. We've gotten sort of a 3D, an interactive 3D presentation that, you know, from any given spot, you can see what it's going to look like. I realize that may be something of a cost. I don't know if it can be done cost-effectively. But I think, I certainly would want to see more than just this one, although very nice illustration, I'd like to see what it looks like from Brook Street at the bottom of Ray. I want to see what, you know, yeah, maybe, maybe it's not very visible from further down on Brook Street.
Yeah, from a few streets away. I mean, we know the ones-
What is, yeah, what does it look like from a little further up, further south on Route 22? And I think if you had that type of interactive 3D modeling, we'd be able to get that, and-
We're concerned about the massing than the textures of the building?
I think the textures look pretty nice to me.
Yeah, I think it's the size, just the sheer size.
I think that the size and the fact that it's, not only the size, but the fact that it's really toward the top of a hill, you know, it-
Prominence?
Yeah, prominence, really. And, you know, I don't know, we're within a hundred and feet of, a hundred and fifty feet of residences there. I know that there's, you know, you're not quite at the top of the hill, and there's a lot of trees in that area. So I don't know what the view is going to look like from whatever the street is there, the houses that are within a hundred and fifty feet. I'd want to see that, too.
And I know in the past, we've, maybe in lieu of that or before we had the idea or the technology to do what Phil's referring to, we floated balloons in the morning to get an idea of the massing. I know there are some complications with that, and if the wind blows, all bets are off, right?
Wouldn't try it tonight.
Yeah, so, I mean, but it was, it was a good idea. We could talk about that, but at the very least, I'd like to see what Phil has put forth.
Yeah, I think the balloons would be, would be obviated by a good 3D rendering.
What do you think?
I like the idea about the 3D rendering. You know, if it could be put into some sort of three-dimensional Google Earth, something very cost-effective, if possible. But more massing, not so much material and photorealistic.
There are-
Since Summerfield, there's been some advances, too, in what they call LiDAR. It allows you to actually bring up some imagery in 3D of what's out there. Now, we could take a look at that and just put it in context. I think where it gets very costly is when you try to do accurate 3D models, total. And if the massing, you know, is something that we can look at, and if you need further detail on that, too, on a particular viewport, I think that's something that Ed could work through. But we could give that a try and see if that starts to address your concerns.
Yeah, we're not trying to break the banquet, you know, but if there's a reasonably cost-effective way for you to present more accurately to us what this is going to look like from different vantage points, that would really go a long ways towards laying our concerns about the massing.
Okay, we'll talk about it amongst our team. We'll talk to Margaret about that, too, and see what we can do to help you out with that.
Once you find that person that's going to be able to do it, if you could bring it in and put it up on the screen and walk us through it.
Okay.
It'll be sold, all right?
All right.
No promises.
We'll write that down.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So I'll give up on the balloons in lieu of that. Thank you. All right, what have we got next?
By the way, since Bloomberg's performance on the debate the other night, I don't think you can use bought or sold, okay?
Is it balloons really used?
Yeah, it worked out pretty, I liked it.
We did talk about this, and it gets really problematic.
It accentuated the potential, our answer, really, or?
Jim, are you all done with your presentation, with your team's presentation at this point? Okay, so then you can talk to-
Right, our consultants.
Our consultants, either one.
Right, so now we're going to do step two, and we're going to listen to our consultants and their comments on some of the information that's put forward. So, Mr. Greeley, we haven't heard from you for a while. Please come in and tell us what you think.
Good evening, Philip Greeley, Mazor Consulting.
And I'm going to stop you right there because I want to know definitively how you spell your first and last names because I've seen it spelled too many different ways.
Okay.
So I want to get this right. One L, that's the right way to spell it. Yeah, thank you.
Correct way. And last name is a little different. G-R-E-A-L-Y.
Okay.
And its variations, L-E-Y, but that's the one. Good evening, Philip Greeley again from Mazor.
It's like Healy except with a G.
I'm sorry?
It's like Healy, except with a GR, okay?
Correct. Simply stated. So the applicant had prepared a traffic impact study which we reviewed. We had, I think, a total of seventeen comments in our memo dated December 10th, 2019, which I believe the board has a copy of. And the applicant has prepared a response dated February 11th to each of those seventeen items. Just to kind of give a recap, because there's been some time and we have a new board member. Those items focused on traffic, but also access, sightlines, accident data, inclusion of other development traffic, such as the reoccupancy of the Acme by DeChicos, and also to account for other traffic from projects in the area. So the applicant has responded to those seventeen comments. Of those, there's several that still need final input from the fire and emergency services, input from the highway department relative to the curb cuts. As pointed out before, Ray Place has a sixteen percent grade. The locations of the driveways appear to be appropriate. They show sightlines that were requested. They also indicate the location of the driveway to the Enclave Development, which is across the street from them. I think that's approximately twenty-four units. And they included the traffic volumes that move in and out of that complex. So those are all included in their traffic impact study. Their traffic study was prepared, pretty much the standard requirements of New York State DOT, Westchester County, and what follow what we call the Institute of Transportation Engineers criteria. The items that I would say are outstanding or we need additional information on, or the important items, I guess, in terms of the issues that need to be resolved. At the intersection of Ray Place and Brook Street, they provided detailed sightline diagrams. So as you're exiting Ray Place onto Brook Street, looking to the left, it can be a challenge, partially because existing on-street parking. Looking to the right is fairly good, looking back towards 22 because the parking is recessed off of the travel lane when CVS was constructed there. So looking to the left, and this is an existing condition. This is not caused by this project, but they evaluated it, they've identified it. And because they're going to be adding traffic there, we asked them to identify what could be done. So in order to improve that site, since you would have to remove approximately three parking spaces. They're metered parking spaces. That would involve an action by the town board to remove those. Brook Street is also a county road. So they need to have some more, they've contacted the county already to get traffic data, et cetera. Just have some more input with the county relative to the sightlines, relative to the sidewalk system that's there. Some of the ramps are non-ADA compliant. They would have to be upgraded. There's other comments that the engineer has relative to that and the new sidewalk system that's being proposed. As I said, it's not just this board, but the town board would have to weigh on the removal of those spaces. And again, that's an existing condition that should be addressed. And now that we're going to be adding traffic from this project, plus the reoccupancy of DeChicos, the former Acme. And relative to that, the applicant's traffic study documented existing traffic conditions. They provided comparisons to New York State DOT historical data on Route 22 and county data on Brook Street. So their base traffic volumes were straightforward. They included projections of background traffic growth, just general growth appropriately. And they included traffic for other specific projects in the area. They included traffic for the Summerfields project, Summerfield Gardens. And they included the reoccupancy traffic, which is significant. The traffic for that side- The traffic for that size supermarket, like a DeChicos, could generate between 300 to 400 total trips in a one-hour period, on a weekday peak and on a Saturday peak. So, they did account for that. The one item that we question is the amount that would use Ray Place, because under existing conditions, Brook Street in on-peak hours has between 700 to 800 vehicles per hour in that area. Route 22 has over 1,000 vehicles in that same one-hour period. The assignment that was used, so the estimates they made for reoccupying that space are standard projections. The distribution of those trips, we would like to see what would happen if more trips did originate from Brook Street and use the Ray Place access. So we've asked for that. Margaret will be circulating our current review, which is just dated today, but I'm kind of giving you the recap of it. So that's one item that's outstanding. The coordination with the highway superintendent, which is really more final site plan details, and the county input, and the input on the sightlines at Brook Street and Ray Place. Those are really the primary highlights that were still outstanding. The majority of the other items in our original memo have been addressed satisfactorily. They've provided all the details relative to that. And I think that's pretty much where we are right now in the process of our review.
In reviewing the traffic study that was presented to us by the applicant, I can't find it this moment, but I seem to recall reading something that said that when they went back and looked at the traffic studies that had been recommended at the October 24th planning board meeting, when the applicant went back and looked at the traffic studies that they had determined that there had actually been a decrease in traffic over that period of time, is that, is that your, consistent with your understanding of...
So if you look at the historical data from the county, there was a drop-off. And in 2011, 2013, so you'll see fluctuations over time. The bottom line is that there really hasn't been significant growth in traffic. You may see a year where it may drop down for a variety of reasons, but the point was to go back and look at the volumes. So they showed that, yeah, the data shows that it actually dropped. Now, depending on time of year, you can get some variations. These are not, you know, comparing summer versus other typical times. So the point is, yeah, there may be a dip, but the reality is that there hasn't been a significant change in the volumes over time. And that's what, we wanted to make sure that the growth factor that they used, which I believe they used 1% a year in their projections, was reasonable. So we're comfortable that they answered that. It seems a little strange when you say, oh, traffic dropped, you know.
Seems counterintuitive to anyone who's driven in the town of Eastchester recently, but that's, is that consistent with your experience? Because I know we, you've been before this board many times, you know this town pretty well.
Yeah, so the drop, as I said, you may see that kind of a bleep in there. The reality is, and there's enough county data, it's not just their data, that it's been relatively flat. There really hasn't been a significant change in volume in this area.
So that's, so the report...
Now, the part of the other reason, if you look at it, the supermarket not being occupied, there's less traffic there. Now, in their study, they accounted for that being put back into the system. So you're going to see, after that gets reoccupied, the volume's going to be back up again, so.
So, I did something quite interesting, I guess some people may think it's interesting, but when I went to go visit the site, I actually made it a point to exit through the parking lot instead of Ray Place and down to Brook Street. So is there anything, or will there be anything in place to sort of control that? Because that could create some safety issues with residents exiting out, going through the parking lot, down to the light on 22, and out.
Correct. So in their evaluation, they showed distribution of the trips. In this case, most going out to Brook Street.
Got it.
Okay, there are some trips that go through the parking area, which, you know, you'd probably travel around the western side of the parking lot to get down to the lower level, out to the light. But by the time you do that, you're out to Brook Street to the light at 22, so...
It's right on red, it's right on red, yeah.
So, but the answer is, and I don't know, as part of the DeChicos redevelopment, there's probably some good traffic restriping that needs to be done. So I don't know if that's in the plans right now. But typically, that would be on the circulation plan of the site itself. The amount of traffic this project that adds through there is not going to be the issue, it's the actual shopping center traffic and the DeChicos traffic that's going to need to be directed properly, I'll say, in terms of striping, signing, et cetera.
And when we did DeChico, I don't think we made any mention of controlling traffic from Ray Place through that lot. Not that you would, but...
Yeah, I think some of it needs to be restripped, the parking lot itself.
So just one question about the data. So the data that you said is used to do all these traffic studies is historic data that the county did. When, like, what's the latest data?
Okay, so they actually did actual traffic counts last year on Brook Street and on Ray Place. So they have actual numbers.
They being whom?
The applicant.
The applicant.
The applicant's traffic engineer did.
Yes.
There's also data that the county has, several different years, I forget what the most recent was, I think 2016 or 17. So the reason we look at those is to see that the volumes that they're using make sense in terms of time of day and what the volumes are. And they do seem reasonable. As I said, part of the reason for that possible drop is because the supermarket wasn't occupied.
Right.
So all those trips, you know, as I said, in the peak hour, it could be 300 trips, and even if it's only a third of them here, that's another 100 cars, so now your drop is no longer there. So. But they did account for it, but we really would like to see that analysis with more people using the raid to Brook Street access.
So that's the main one open item that we need input?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Tramelli, if you educate us about stormwater and waste and...
Hi, good evening. Joe Tramelli from Kellard Sessions. This is our second formal review of this application, and as the applicant mentioned, we've had a number of staff-level meetings. We've also had some meetings at my office with their engineer, just going over some of the finer details with regard to stormwater and sanitary waste and managing those. I have a memo for you. I can go through some of the larger items in here briefly with you.
Sure.
As we've mentioned a couple of times already, with regards to fire, our last meeting with the fire chief, his plan is a direct result of that. I think it, I think we'll find, and obviously we'll want him to confirm this, but the layout and the fire access that's proposed, the aerial apparatus setup is what we discussed at that meeting. And he's got the turning, turning movements to show adequate maneuverability into and out of the site. As requested, the applicant's provided your board with a lighting plan, as well as a landscaping plan. We had some minor comments on both. The lighting plan, we thought, in a couple of areas around the site, the front of the building and the left side in particular, it almost looked like maybe the study wasn't completed for those areas. There's some areas that are blank or no light whatsoever. So just to look at that. And then with regard to the landscaping, they provided some screening around the perimeter of the site, as was requested. There's two trees in particular in the front of the property that are proposed to remain. I don't really know the likelihood of that coming to fruition. I've also talked with your highway super, and we're recommending that those two trees be removed, and then additional planting be considered for those areas. With regard to sewer, that's something that we've been working with their engineer with, and with highway, to try and develop a program for some adequate and appropriate mitigation. So with the 21 units, there's going to be an added level of sanitary load to the existing system. I think we all know that there's historically been some issues with the capacity of that system, particularly during storm events. I think a lot of that came to light in the Summerfield application you were referring to earlier. So, we've asked that the applicant provide us with a capacity analysis of the sanitary system in Brook Street, and then adding the proposed sewer load from their building to that, under dry conditions, just to ensure that that sewer has capacity for the project as it is. But then in addition to that, as was also recommended by the county, there's, as a means to mitigate that added sewer load, there is the ability for reduction in inflow and infiltration, or INI. And to do that, I've had a couple of discussions already with the highway superintendent, looking at some sewer maps. We've reviewed them briefly with the applicant, and we'll continue the conversation. But the idea is to try and find areas in that same sewer shed, maybe not necessarily immediately adjacent to the project, but Brook Street main trunk line flows down towards Scarsdale Avenue, and ultimately under the tracks. And the neighborhood behind Brook Street, or to the north, Summerfield, Montgomery, that area, that whole network of sewers, all ultimately discharges to the same design point. So the idea would be to maybe investigate some of those sewers in that area, some of the older lines, maybe they have leaking joints, failed pipes, manholes that need repair, and try and isolate some areas that make sense to either do localized repairs, or maybe relining of sections of sewer, to eliminate that infiltration and that inflow. And that'll offset the proposed sewer loads from the building. And then the other big item that we're still working through with the applicant is the stormwater. So they've, they've sized a system to mitigate the 100-year storm event, or through the 100-year storm event. And they, as a conservative measure, and as is the policy of the town, although the existing conditions, there's two existing parking lots, and the majority of the site right now is impervious, their analysis assumes that it's undeveloped. So it's a conservative approach, which will certainly help. The tricky part with this particular project, the overflow parking from the DeChico lot, there is an existing system in that parking lot that serves that overflow parking lot. Still trying to figure out the details of that system, and how best to, that system will have to be removed to accommodate the new building. So how best to continue mitigating that overflow lot while doing what they need to do for their site? And there's some, they're trying to work through some interconnections between the properties and trying to eliminate that. So they've got some work to do there, but they're heading in the right direction. And as was mentioned, with regard to sewer and water, there'll be public mains or extensions to the public mains for both. That'll require not only town approval, but health department, Westchester County Health Department, they'll be working towards that. And then finally, with regard to Ray Place itself, in meeting with your highway super, a couple of, I guess, recommendations for the ultimate completion of Ray Place when the project's done. As was requested, the applicant is now proposing a sidewalk connection from the building down to Brook Street. He had asked that, and these can be worked out later on with the site plan details, but simply shifting that sidewalk about two feet from the curb to provide some snow storage space. The curb...
Doesn't snow anymore.
It really doesn't. Curbing is in pretty bad shape, so we'd like, he'd like to see that be replaced. As was mentioned already, resurfacing the entire stretch of Ray Place, it's going to get a little beat up with all the services and extensions. And then looking at some of the existing structures, some of them could probably, I think there's one that could be eliminated, and there's two or three that are in pretty good disrepair, so we'd like to see those rebuilt or replaced. I think that was it. Unless you have any questions.
So is, what are the outstanding items, coming up with a way to mitigate the amount of sanitary being put into the lines? That's obviously something that's still in work, and as far as water, it's a matter of just making a connection and making sure the water can be provided?
Yeah.
Utility.
If I heard you, and was this part, basically, we'd be sort of horse trading? You can put your increased amount of, into the system, but you'll have to, the town will try to identify areas where that system can be enhanced, so that it will be better able to withstand that increased capacity?
Right, you want to try, the county has a policy that, or a recommended policy, three-to-one mitigation. So they have 21 units at 110 gallons a day, you do the math, you come up with a projected design flow, sewer flow from that building. You want to try and mitigate that, and a good way to do that is to eliminate known sources of INI. So whether it be illegal basement, some pump connections, they're a little harder to find, but I think a relatively simple way to do that is to televise some certain areas of that system, and, you know, find some, I assume we'd find some older pipes with leaking joints, those could be relined. And then the only flow in that line at that point is sanitary waste. So, yes, you have a bucket, right, it's all going in that same spot, but if we can, we know we're going to add to it with this development, but if we could remove some of the stormwater from the system, it'll certainly help.
Does it have to be one for the other equal amounts, or is a certain percentage of what you're producing enough? Like, do you have to find 100% of the volume you're putting out?
They recommend three-to-one.
So it's 300%?
Yes, it's 300%, it's three times...
Quantifying that is a little difficult. I don't, I don't think we need to go to the level of monitoring sanitary manholes during storm events, and that, I think with some televised inspections of a couple of streets in that neighborhood, I think we'll find pretty quickly.
Can you really? Your experiences that you could find that much?
From what I'm hearing from the highway super and just some of the history, and the age of the system, I think it'd be a pretty easy find.
Got it. Okay.
So we'll continue to work with the applicant, with your highway department to, we want to try and delineate a study area.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before, I think what we have left is public comments, or to hear from the public. But before we go to the public, can I ask one more, one more thing from you, Mr. Vogel, and that's about the impact on the schools? How, who can answer that?
I'm Rick Boland from James C. So to answer that question, we used a well-recognized document from Rutgers University. It's just the residential demographic multipliers. So in the, in the document, they kind of break down number of units, number of bedrooms for each building, and you take your number of units, and you multiply it by a certain amount, and that'll project the amount of school-age children, children from, it breaks it down from 0 to 4, 5 to 13, 14 to 17, and on. And using our numbers, there's a projected school-age children from our development, only about 2 to 3 school-age children. And I could provide this document to you guys, and then type up a memo and break this down for you guys, if you'd like, that'd be no problem.
So that wasn't provided to the board, at least we haven't seen it?
No, this has not yet.
Right, I thought, I maybe just didn't read it, but thank you. Yeah, if you put something in the file, because it's an obvious, obvious question, but it sounds like for the viewing public also?
Yep.
What kind of viewing public?
Sizable viewing audience, thank you.
Right, but you said two, two, two to three.
Give me the exact point, 2-point how many kids?
Margaret always told me it's 2.3.
But also, this is a little unusual, in that they're proposing 18 one-bedroom units and only 3 two-bedroom units.
Yeah, we've seen this with, with the Main Street application as well. I think they gave us a very similar approach, and I can't remember the exact breakdown, but it was, that is, was it nine?
Nine one-bedroom and six two-bedroom units, I believe.
Yeah, and they were projecting like 2.2 kids, or something like that. And it was, the logic was the same, that ordinarily, if you have a one-bedroom unit, you may be able to tolerate a new... you may be able to tolerate a newborn, but when, when that newborn starts or moves into toddler phase and certainly before they arrive at, at school age, you are going to go crazy if you don't move out of that one bedroom. So that's, there's a certain truth to it. It passes the obvious truth test. So if you can reduce that to some sort of a study for, that we can consume readily, it makes sense, but that is a question that I know we've heard from the public and legitimate concerns.
If there, but if there are schoolchildren in either developments, one across the street or this one, they obviously probably get picked up on the corner on Brook, right? No school buses come up red.
I'm not sure about that. I don't know for a fact where they get picked up.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Great. All right, I'm good. Thank you. So I think we're done hearing. So now this is an open public hearing, so now there's the opportunity for the public to come up and state their concerns or opinions about this. When you come up, please just come up to the microphone, state your name and address and we'll listen to the comments.
I'm Gloria Doiker and I live at 144 Brook Street. So-
Did you know about the former name of Brook Street?
I had no idea. I had no idea. I lived at such a classy-
You've learned something.
...location. But I just wanted to ask, I do recall, and I wrote it down here, that the number, 220 feet extension on Brook Street for sewage and water is, would be required, which means Brook Street would be, I assume it means Brook Street going downhill. And I was just wondering how long Brook Street would be torn up for something like that.
Before he answers, do you have any other comments?
I'm sorry?
Before he answers, are there any other comments or is that the only one?
No, that's the only one I had.
Cool. Thank you.
Thank you.
I may have stumbled on that wording on that. It's actually the 220 feet is on Ray Place leading down to Brook Street, but we do have to make the connection in Brook Street. That's, you know, for that type of a connection, it's usually a one to two-day open trench and then repaving and so on. So there'll be some disturbance on Brook Street, but most of it's going to be on Ray Place, the 220 is on Ray Place.
Thank you.
Great. John Jennings, nine in his free place. Is this a rental or is it condo or what is this? And is it, is there any tax abatements with this? Is this like an 80/20 or anything like that?
I'm going to ask the architect to answer that question.
Or some member of the team.
Well, he would know if it's a rental.
John Saracino, Augusta's Development. It is a rental and we have not requested any tax abatements.
Further comments on this application?
I think we have a gentleman coming.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board. Charlie Gallinick, 21 Potter Place. I have a laundry list of things, so if somebody has less than me, perhaps maybe they should go ahead of me.
No, go ahead.
Go ahead. Yep.
Thank you. Okay. On, we'll start with the sewage and also the stormwater. The sewage, we know we have to run a line approximately 220 feet to get from the project down to the connection at Brook Street. Then we talked about the stormwater is going to be self-contained underneath, if I understood that correctly. The point I bring out is DeChico has a project up the line from them. Where are they going to start running their lines? Are they going to need additional sewage lines? Are they going to have to have runoff lines for storage, for storm? And if that's the case, wouldn't it be somewhat advisable to see how they're going to do things first and then coordinate with this project so that you're not digging up twice? You know, like a carpenter, measure once, measure twice, cut once, something like that? Okay. So that's one of the questions I have. How many variances is this project requesting?
Nine.
Nine. We have a project here that is elevated, if they showed a picture again, from 22 where you see CVS, you'll see this height of this project compared to the project that's on the opposite side of Ray Place. It's high. Do we need, in the M20, height maximum 45 to go to 55? Do we need the bulkhead to go 55 to 65? Do we need the R6 height to go two and a half stories to four? Do we need the 30 to go to 50? Do we need the bulkhead to go 30 to 60, doubling it? Do we need that? Isn't it, wouldn't it be nice in our community if we have developers that work with the community? And if the community, if the regulations say you can do this without any variances, do that. To come in and now ask for nine variances, and I only, I believe this is only probably six of those nine. And I think that's something that the board has to really, really take to heart and take a hard look at, at these variances that they ask.
Well, I just, I just want to address that for one second. In terms of the amount of variances that are being asked, the variances themselves are an issue that the zoning board will be addressing. That is something separate. In terms of site plan, you may have questions and concerns about the scaling of the project. But in terms of the number of variances and the variances themselves, that is not something that the zoning, that the planning board addresses. So just to clarify that.
Except for the planning board is, can refer the, the application to the zoning board with a recommendation with regard to the variances. And the variances are very closely tied into things like building height, et cetera.
Right. So all of the concerns you brought up are the concerns of this board. The fact that there's nine of them is beyond our control. And so we're looking at the massing of the building and exactly what you said, so.
And I'm guessing you're not so concerned with the fact that they're asking for a one-foot variance on the parking radius for their garage? I think you've mostly articulated height and massing related issues.
Correct.
And, and we have asked the applicant to come back to us with more information on that.
Okay. And in the diagram that they have, the first two stories, if I understand it correctly, are garage spaces. The windows there that are on the first floor and second floor, are there any other offices, any other apartments going into those first two floors? Or is it those windows and doors, is that more for aesthetic? Or are there going to be other things?
Yeah, answer that question.
Is there going to be anything other than parking?
I don't know if there's a program other than parking on that floor. We'll bring up the architect in a minute to answer that specifically.
We will find that out.
Yeah, we're going to ask as soon as you're done.
But I did ask and it was answered. There, there are 21 units, there are seven units each on the third, fourth and fifth floors. There are no units below the third floor. And that that second floor with the windows on it was purely aesthetic decorative.
Okay.
That's a garage. That's what we were told.
All right, thank you. The only reason why I posed that question is so that somewhere we don't have any type of stores or any other type of development in Level One and Level Two. It's solely designated to park.
Right. Well, if it's not on this application, it can't be built. And if it wants to be turned into something other than what's on the plan, they have to come back and ask us that.
And they have to keep it as parking because they're seeking a variance. 33 spots would be required, they are proposing 31. They cannot remove any of those spots without running afoul of, of any approval of a variance. So, and, and that would be subject to enforcement by the town.
Excellent. Thank you.
So that's my answer.
And on the possible traffic control on Brook Street and Ray, who's going to pay for that?
Traffic control.
Yeah, I don't believe, a traffic control is not being proposed there.
I know. I said that to get your attention because why I asked is with the amount of traffic that's going to be coming in, once DeChico's village has come in, people still, as we know, cut right now through there and there's nothing going on there. There's a lot of traffic coming down here. And as they brought out before, they're saying that when you turn left, even with Acme being there, it's tough. You've got folks coming off the parkway, folks coming over from Yonkers. Taking a left turn when traffic is moving, sometimes folks are nice, they'll leave a hole for you to get through. Sometimes they won't. Because if you, if you're familiar with you are, that we're allowed to turn red on the traffic light on 22, which means anyone turning, that's going to be a flow, which means a lot of folks don't want to stop. So traffic control, a light would help. And I haven't heard that proposed. That might be something to think about or ask them. In this project, that might be something that can be requested. Sanitation, we talked about the fire department lighting out for hook and ladders, about 26 feet or 26 and a half. Sanitation, was that mentioned where the pickup's going to be, where the storage is going to be? I don't think I heard that.
We will.
So that's something to consider. And that's about it for me. Thank you again.
Good.
Appreciate it.
So can we just get JMC to comment on the DeChico? Can we get a response to-
From the applicant.
Right. Can we get a response on if the sanitary and sewer and storm coming from DeChico's, has been any calculations that you put forth?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Rocco Salerno, attorney for the applicant. With respect to the water and sanitary sewer issue, the fact that DeChico may be adding additional water or sewage or whatever is really irrelevant at this point because it's my understanding that DeChico is, is proposing to occupy the existing space, you know, the space originally occupied by Acme. I don't know if that's a done deal or not, but more importantly, DeChico is a supermarket. Acme was a supermarket. So I don't see how we can anticipate any more discharge of sanitary sewer or stormwater or anything down, you know, Ray Place. I just don't see that-
We approved, we approved that application for DeChico and Sons and I don't-
They have a building permit now. They have not proposed any-
There's no changes.
No changes regarding the sanitary sewer and stormwater.
And I think logically, you're correct. I think the, the usage is basically identical. And so I-
Point, point taken.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you for your response.
Next, with respect to the windows on the first and second floor, if necessary, Ed Vogel can address the board again on that issue. Next, with respect to traffic control, there has been no traffic control at Brook and Ray Place, Brook Street and Ray Place, while Acme was in business and before Acme, I believe it was Food Emporium.
Yes.
It's been a supermarket for years and years.
VMP, I think before that, maybe.
Exactly. And the traffic study that the applicant has submitted reveals that there's going to be really no additional traffic at that intersection by reason of this project.
Well, not, not, I think it was between seven and 10 cars an hour. It's not, that's not zero.
Well, it'll be minimal.
Relative to the, to the, to the shopping, to the supermarket, it may be small.
It'll be minimal.
And I think if there is a concern, if there is a concern with traffic, it's more likely that that will be caused by the supermarket than by this development.
But I think more likely our traffic engineers have not indicated that a traffic signal is warranted at that intersection.
That's right. But that's what, we're going through that process.
Right. That's being followed up on.
And as far as sanitation, where is the pickup? I believe it's already been, the board has already been informed that we've already had meetings with the police department, fire department, highway department, sanitation department, obviously the building department. And I believe the sanitation issue was satisfactorily addressed in the site plan and documents that were submitted.
Thank you for your clarifications, but I'd like to know where the sanitary is.
Yeah, I think it's actually, I think that's still a little bit under investigation by the applicant. So do you want to, and I just want to clarify again, it's going to be Private Carter that picks it up. So there were some still questions in some of our memos about how it's going to be stored, where it's going to be stored, that kind of thing.
Yeah, and we can further address these issues. Obviously, what we're looking for is a negative deck with respect to SECR and a referral to the Zoning Board of Appeals for the requisite variances. We don't expect to get that this evening, okay? So we will take the comments into consideration, we'll continue to work with Margaret and the planning board and the building department, and we will hopefully address the balance of these concerns to your satisfaction.
Thank you. Just lead us down the road on sanitation. Is there a spot for it? It's a question, it's a legitimate question, there's got to be some sort of response.
I'd like to just backtrack a bit. There are no business uses proposed in this project.
I understand. And there's no, there's no usage other than parking on the first and second floors?
Correct.
There's no back-up house or anything else? It's just come in, park your car?
And build the access.
Correct. As described by the board. Regarding sanitation, we do have a collection room within the building. That's where sanitation debris or product will be stored. We're talking private collection, so they'll come in as needed on a regular basis and collect the garbage. It'll either be from the room itself or from a little staging area on the day of pickup, which can be controlled.
It'll be brought out, picked up, not left out.
Correct. On-site, it'll be still on-site.
Right. So when we do the plans, we can point that out, if it's not already there, where those staging areas will be. Perfect. Thank you.
Do you want to see if there's any more public comments?
Yeah, of course. Any more public comments? Mr. Sweeney?
Frank Sweeney, Mr. Chairman, board members, Margaret, Counselor.
Forgot to give you your address, Mr. Sweeney.
Excuse me?
You forgot to give your address.
Okay.
Those are the rules.
I've been here a number of times before, so I think a lot of people do know me in terms of-
We know you.
And you happen to know I'm an advocate of the 396 homes in the North End of Eastchester. So it's a little bit of a situation for us, is with its only 21 units coming off Ray Place, it may not be that big a deal. But when you put it in the context of what's happening, is you need to understand the infrastructure of the North End of town. And we've been through this a number of times. On a rainy day, on Brook Street, Scarsdale Avenue, I'm walking up to the sewer with water up to my ankles. Now, this is not new. Everybody in town knows it. Everybody in town knows it. And now we're going to move some additional sewage onto Brook Street. And the reason it's called Brook Street, so if you really take a look underneath the street and you take a look at Wooddrift Avenue, we have continuous water running through that street, seven by 24. It never stops. We're going to add additional sewage on. I don't know where it's going to go. I don't know how you're going to get it over to the Yonkers station. But I think it's an important point that we know we're in trouble already with the infrastructure. The other question is, do we have at least the understanding from DeChico and from Enclave? Are they, are they involved? Are they here tonight? Have they been involved in the process of this project?
They've been notified as property owners of the public hearing. So it's their choice whether they choose to attend the meetings or to participate, but they have been notified.
I mean, the Enclave is a beautiful situation. It's a condominium. It's not a rental property. It's not a rental property. I'd just like to get a feeling of what the apartments look like in terms of square foot and the rental value of the property. Because it appears that they're coming in and they're basically saying, in order for us to make any money at this, this is what we're proposing. But we don't know the level of detail that I think we need to know. The other thing is that I think you've identified it specifically when you take a look at the project from CVS, looking up the hill, in terms of the capability of what you're looking at, it's pretty steep. It's pretty steep. The other issue is I have is that, is there going to be any restriction in the flow of traffic through the Seacoast parking lot to get out to Route 22 and the traffic light on Route 22? I think that's the natural way to go if I was coming down the hill and I wanted to get out in a reasonable time. I go to the traffic light, make a left-hand turn, go to the next traffic light, make a left-hand turn, and go to Brook Street. I don't know whether the Seacoast is even aware of it, of the possibility. I don't know if the people at Enclave are aware of the impact. I'm hoping they are. The idea is having 31 parking spots, which is one and a half times the rate of the apartments that they have. We're going to kind of move for any visitors that may be visiting 21 units? Where would they park? I have no idea. But I think as a board, you need to consider the overall impact, the infrastructure of what's going on. We've been through this a number of times on Dunwoody. You're not going to come down Woodruff Avenue, I'm telling you right now. The next meeting, I'll have 200 people that live on Woodruff Avenue down here telling you it's not going to happen. They're faced with that water single every day of their lives, that flow of water. It's called Brook Street for a reason. I'd like to leave you with one thought and the opportunity to take a second look with due diligence, take a look at the infrastructure, the impact, and see where you can kind of come to a reasonable meeting. Does it have to be five stories? I don't know. But it just seems like it's overpowering, and this is their position that they're taking. What is the town's position? Is there something more reasonable? Something halfway in between? That's all I'm asking for, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
We appreciate your comments, Mr. Sweeney. Thank you.
I think you bring up a very good point, that the information can be presented to people. What we know from experience is people don't take the opportunity to educate themselves. So, you know, I found out about this meeting, I came, so many of my neighbors aren't here. But the reason I say that, but this goes back to the point of, in the renderings, you had asked to see something that indicated that the size, the volume, you know, the massiveness of this. We saw the picture and we saw what it looked like, and we indicated, somebody said, I'm forgot, perhaps it was you, that there's new software out there that you can do renderings, but then who sees those renderings? Does someone have to come to a meeting again? I know it's really retro and really old school, but those balloons that were floated under, over Somerville, they really did the job. I mean, people could see it. People knew what was happening, and I just, I'd advocate for that again, and the renderings. But I think just to educate the community a little bit in a way that they will take advantage of you're trying to educate them.
That's a very good point. Thank you.
It is.
And so, just back to what you said, I think the concerns of everyone that's here today, Mr. Sweeney, your comments, and everyone in the community that comes forth and states their concerns don't go unnoticed because all of us are Eastchester residents and we don't just say yes to everything. The fact that we've listened and not made comments here doesn't mean that we've acquiesced and agree, it means it's being developed. We will continue and we will make judgment and recommendations as we continue, but certainly it's, everything's still open. Please, please come forward.
Thank you again for my second time around. Charlie Gallinick, 21 Potter, and Frank Sweeney is 22 Lakeview.
Thank you.
So we have it in the record.
Sorry, while you came up, to tell us the address.
I want to thank the responses that were to my questions, but now I have to pose a couple questions to the board, and also to the gentlemen and ladies. We'll talk a little, we'll go down memory lane a little bit. We'll talk about Food Emporium and the amount that the parking lot was full, and then when Food Emporium left, Acme came in, and the amount of traffic that was lessened in the parking lot, traffic that was in a store, and eventually they moved out. I would ask the board if it's possible, at your convenience, to go up to the Chico store up in Odsley. Take a look at their parking lot. Take a look at their store. I think there's only one or two other establishments next to the Chico. One is Slice Pizza, and there might be something else, a Dry Cleaners or something. Those parking lots are pretty full every time you go up there. The Chico, it's my understanding, and I guess the board knows a lot more than I do, but they're talking about going into a full-size business there besides groceries. If I understand it correctly, they don't have a little restaurant, and if it's like Odsley, they have a beautiful fish section, meat section, bakery. Up in Odsley, they even have, I don't know if the right terminology is called a garag, where it's like taps of beer that you bring your own containers in. It's massive, okay? And it's a smaller store. This store is larger than the one in Odsley. So where am I going? When they come in, they'll be using more sewage, using more water, their footprint is going to be larger in the parking lot, where before we had the golden opportunity to have a lot of spaces up there. I don't think that's going to happen. I mean, I'll let you use your decision to see if you think I'm correct. Now, taking, asking the town to give away three parking spots down on Brook Street, I think the parking and traffic committee should know about that. People are up in arms because they don't have enough parking, and we're going to give, they're requesting three to make it easier to possibly turn left. As I said before, a possible solution is a traffic control. Now, who pays for it? That's not me to decide, but that's something that would alleviate part of that problem then. And if you don't think between the Chico's and its development, there's going to be a logjam on 22 and Brook Street, I ask you to take a look at Trader Joe's. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
See if there's anyone else.
Right, any other comments? Okay, thank you. So the public hearing remains open. So I think we've heard comments, as you said, we're not ready to make a determination on SECR, so we're not ready to make any references to the zoning board. I think we've put forth the information we would like to see at the next meeting, and at the next meeting, we'll continue and see if we're ready to move forward on SECR, but based on the fact that I think we're asking to see more information, I'm not quite sure what we'll be able to do then. So I think I know what we want.
Can I ask a question or just follow up on a couple of things? Not to backtrack too much, but just with regard to this woman said, I wanted to clarify something I said, but also wanted to follow up on something you said. I just want to make it, no, not only are the applicants required to notify people within a 200-foot radius, and in this case, those may be quite a bit of commercial properties too, and not necessarily, you know, the residents that are further away. We also, and again, it just depends on the level of interest people have typically, but we also send out agendas to anyone that wants to see an agenda within town, so those are blasted out to residents that sign up for an email blast. We also post, they're required to be posted in the newspaper, they're also posted on the website, so we try to make it easy for people to be aware of things. I think your point about the balloons was a good point, and I know the chairman thought that was a good point. That is something that we discussed with the applicant in a side meeting, and I don't know if you want to address that. The thing with 151 Summerfield Street that made it somewhat easier, although having gone there early in the morning as people were setting up, it was more complicated than it seemed, but what made that one somewhat easier is the balloons were tied to the top of an existing building, and so, you know, we already had some height and there was things to anchor them on, and my understanding, doing the balloons is not as easy or accurate as it sounds. We're also talking about using drones, I mean, we're trying to think of all different options. So Jim, are there other options? Because that would clearly make it known that something is proposed there.
Definitely on a site like this, it's a big challenge. You'd have to have the perfect day, essentially, for them to match up the proper height, but we may be able to do something with flying a drone for a limited period of time at the right elevation. That can be calculated very specifically in a drone flight, you know, and arranged at a certain time.
What does a drone do?
It would basically hover at that elevation.
Oh, and just leave it there and photograph?
Yeah. Leave it there and photograph it, look at it from various locations, it can hover for, you know, periods of time, if that's...
Or drones to get the four corners.
All four corners.
An army of drones.
You can have it circulate on all four corners. There are things that we can do like that. This would be very difficult to try to do a balloon test on this too.
And the issue with the drones is if you're not somebody who's there that morning to view it, you miss it. The balloons that were at 151 Summerfield Street didn't stay up long, but I think they were there over the course of a weekend, so people, you know, as they were driving by or walking by could see it, you know, so maybe that is something we could discuss, potential options with the applicant.
Even if it's a time when we're not, when everyone can't be there, we can have it taped somehow and see it thereafter.
But I think part of the point is so that people see it from, in real life, yeah, from different vantage points. As soon as it gets to be a photograph or a video, I think it's, you're back to the 3D modeling, basically.
Okay.
Yeah, I think hopefully we can answer the questions with, you know, some representation in a model, a massing model, to give you an idea, putting it in context with other buildings, but we'll continue to work through that issue, see what we can do to at least give the board and the residents some idea of where it's going to be height-wise.
I appreciate your...
Okay, thank you.
Then I was going to make a couple of other quick points.
Yeah, we're here all night. Go ahead.
I know, we're not trying to drag it on. So what I was going to say is I think we have so much information from our consultants, from the fire department, from the highway department here, so what I'm going to try to make a concerted effort to do is go through all of the information and kind of weed out what the board may feel and what our consultants and I feel are necessary to satisfy your considerations with regard to SECR and making a determination of significance, and then certain other things can wait until site plan approval, and I think there, you know, a lot of things are kind of overlapping here. So within the next few days, I'll try to at least weed out what are really, I think the visual analyses are really necessary for SECR. Details on the, you know, when the sanitation is being picked up is more of a site plan issue, and I know it's complicated for the applicant sometimes to determine what the board is looking for with regard to wanting to move on, so I'll try to coordinate with you and them to kind of consolidate those comments.
That would be appreciated.
And that was it.
All right. I think we're good then. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next application is 20...
21.
20, right, 2001, 118 Brook Street.
spelling of Greeley.
Oh, okay.
Could you pass it on? Because she has it spelled G-R-E-E-L-E-Y.
Okay, I will let her know.
Aris Greeley, yeah. But I knew that it was different, but I didn't know what it was.
Okay, I'll let her know. Got it in my notes, right?
Thanks, Margaret. You would not be able to sleep tonight if you didn't tell you to go home and text that to you.
Well, the problem is you see it over and over wrong, and then it becomes...
It drives me crazy too, yeah.
So I don't like that.
With my name, they spell it all the time.
Yes. I was looking for the Brooks you have here.
Oh, you found it.
Where's all this stuff for that application?
Good evening, members of the zoning board.
The planning board.
I'm sorry.
Don't insult us.
Got caught up with the previous one. First thing I want to say is, sorry you guys had to go through all two hours.
That's why we're here.
That's quite a feat. Usually we're used to things moving along a little bit, so I'll try to be brief on this one.
Thank you.
The project, first off, I'm Bruno Pedro Santi, the architect that's representing Wood and Fire to client with regards to the application. We had already been to this board the previous month. Since then, we've gone to the ARB, received their blessing, come back here, and here we are. The latest rendition that we have here is a reaction to the board's comments at the last meeting, which was for us to visit the opportunity for valet parking on the site. What we had presented to you the last time is a conventional hazard right layout, and what we've done since then...
How many spots are in that, before you flip? Before you flip, the hazard right, how many spots are there, plus the handicap?
The hazard right has 22 parking spaces.
How many, 2-2?
Well, it's got 19 that are fully conforming and three that are for employees that are, don't conform because they're tandem.
That's correct.
19 for customers.
19 actual spots for customers, and the other three would be employees and loading and things of that nature. 19 actual spots for customers, and the other three would be employees and loading and things of that nature. The, the new rendition, or the updated rendition in terms of the opportunity for additional parking based on valeting would be to stack this row that's existing here with additional cars, eliminating temporarily the spaces that would be along the building. Everything beyond in this area here would remain the same. So, those three spaces in the, on the side remain. So, with this plan, we have 25 spaces.
So, Bruno, Bruno?
Yeah.
Can I just ask you a quick question? You're showing the 25. Is that how they're actually parked when they valet them? Or are you just, because I, I'm just, they're all shown as, you know, nine by 18 spaces, and it seems like...
Well...
When they actually valet park, because I don't think what the board was asking for was a, like a neat plan, but like, how many cars do you actually get in there when you valet park?
Right, and again, that's, that's kind of hard to say, but in, in, in reality, this is a typical parking spot, but, you know, if you kind of squeeze the cars together, you'll actually have more.
Right, what they actually do, you can put it on a drawing.
You might get like an extra two cars here. But depth-wise, you need the extra depth in order to maneuver the cars. So, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that you'd get more spaces this way, but potentially you'll get some more this direction.
One, one or two, you said.
I would say at least two, maybe four.
But the one, the two spots over by the handicap, I'm not quite sure those are real spots, right?
Well, again, this, this, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm saying it's not really 25. I, I think it's less, right?
I think they're assuming there won't be a car in that.
Yeah, and, and I didn't count, I didn't count that spot.
Say that again?
I didn't number that spot.
No, the ones directly behind it where your finger is?
Oh, oh, well, you'll be able to kind of get in here and maneuver, but we're not counting the handicap spot. Because with valeting, you wouldn't need the handicap.
So, handicap stays out, you'll get those cars in and out because you use that spot.
It just becomes an aisle space, really, yeah, like a turnaround.
Okay.
And so, Margaret had asked us also to kind of embellish a little more the available public parking. And so, what we've done is actually color-coded all the spaces within this 300-foot radius, of which are street parking and parking lot parking. And then some of them have certain restrictions such as free parking. Some of them are free parking, some are metered parking, some are 15-minute parking, some are one hour, some are two hours, and then there's long-term parking. Then, of course, I believe over the weekends, they don't usually charge in some of these. There's no metered fee during, during some, during the weekends on some of the spaces. And I think we've kind of indicated that here. So, for example, metered parking in this area is enforced Monday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And these require, and then there's certain ones that require permits.
Did you bring anything that, to submit to the board so the board can, because we, we're having difficulty reading?
An actual handout?
Yes.
Actually, I could provide that. It's just, we kind of rushed this because it was like a last-minute thing. We, we were contemplating bringing a package together, but kind of missed out. But I can easily get that to you tomorrow.
So, in all of the colored spots, how many would there be for the different...
Well, they're, they're all pretty much, they're, they're all pretty much available. There are certain ones that are 15-minute parking. Those are the ones that you would say, well, that's not really, those don't really qualify for a meal, so to speak. But if you're going to stop for a meal an hour, is that usually adequate?
So, so how many spots total minus the 15-minute?
Those 15-minute ones? Let's see. There's, there's about five, there's about five, 10, 10 spaces out of the total that we have here. So, I don't know if I have these all totaled up. So, for example, we have, we have, we have roughly about 50 parking spaces.
Say that again?
Roughly about 50 parking spaces altogether. And I'd say about 10 of them are the 15-minute limitations.
Those 15-minute limitations are full-time 15-minute limitations, right? That's not a...
Well, and over the weekends, you don't have that, that stipulation, but...
And are they 24 hours, or are they, do they stop at 6 o'clock, or do you know?
They stop at 6 o'clock. They, they stop at 6 o'clock. Everything is, is over with at 6 o'clock.
Right, all 50 over at 6 o'clock.
And so, even the, the 15-minute parking says, parking 15 minutes.
That's correct.
Mon, what, Monday through Saturday, whatever hour to 6 p.m.?
We're talking about worst-case scenario like...
Does that sound, does that sound right to you, Rob?
I'm not sure.
I don't know.
You should know.
We, we checked, just so you know, we actually checked with your, with your parking personnel here in town with the specifics on these, so...
Because that makes a big difference if you, because I would imagine the larger groupings of diners are coming in probably 6 o'clock and later most evenings.
Agreed.
As opposed to during the daytime.
And I, I think what I had expressed in my email is the concern is, how many parking, if, if the valet, which can fit possibly 25 spaces with a total of 118 seats, including, you know, and, and hopefully you'll have everyone there all at once. I, what the board wanted to know is, you know, where are other available, what, what else is available? And then most likely in dinnertime, you know, because that's probably when it's going to be busiest. So, just to kind of verify that there's ample parking, I would say after 6 o'clock, where it's not limited to 15 minutes or not limited to an hour, or possibly not required to have a permit or something like that. So, that, that's what I'm...
I, I just figured I'd give you all that information as far as the worst-case scenario because of, say, let's say, a lunchtime type of thing. Because on the weekends, usually the lunches are, but again, they don't get enforced on a Sunday, for example.
So, what's the peak usage is dinner weekends?
That's really when they usually do the, the valet, yeah.
Right. So, we're talking about all 118 seats, God willing, will be filled, right? And where do those, where do cars or however those people, for those 118 seats actually go?
So, so as it was explained to me the last time, and I think Mr. Carenza, who was one of the owners, was here, and I actually have two of the other owners here today. The way it was explained to me is that with, with the valeting, they do actually valet at the moment. With the valeting, they have no issues regards to being able to satisfy their customer base. What, what we've done here too, one of the reasons why we're here is that we have some modifications to the terrace. We actually added a dining room on the upper level, if you recall. So, the fact that we don't, that terrace is kind of a seasonal thing and is less seating than the upstairs. What we're providing for, or what we're proposing is less than what was originally, you know, contemplated. But again, sometimes situations happen and questions come up again when you have a new, a new, fresh look at something, and so we've reacted to it by giving you information.
I have a question?
Yes.
The current situation now, where you have valets parking the cars, and, and I've been there and, you know, had my car valet parked.
Sure.
Is the valet parking all of the cars onsite, or are they bringing cars off-site when the lot is full to other streets and then bringing the cars back?
The particulars on that, I'm going to have to ask the owners to answer that. But what I can tell you is that anything that's not only, that's onsite is definitely included, but also possibly a few spaces that are in front of the property. Those would be included in the valet. Now, whether someone is going to bring it down the block and then have to walk back, that's, you know, another matter. But I'm going to ask...
Well, hang on, before you, a few more questions before you go on. Just hang on a second, stay. Yeah, so a couple of points or observations I'd like to make is, existing is 85, right? So, the existing seats in the, in the establishment right now is 85 seats. There's being proposed, and we counted up, 118 seats based on the new plans we have with deuces instead of fours. So, that's an increase of 33 seats. So, somehow, those seats and the vehicles to bring in the, the existing 85, I think the existing 85 were comfortable. Somehow it was handled, so we're not changing that. It's the net increase of 33. Is that right?
And also, to be clear, the, the 34 outdoor were previously approved, approved outdoor dining seats. I believe they may have already used more than that. You know what I'm saying? I'm not sure what's actually existing now.
Right, so maybe 85 is low, and it's actually 100 already.
Yeah, we've updated that plan, and I, I should correct in what I said. We actually add more seating altogether, but regards to the seasonal usage, so for example, the terrace, when the terrace is being used, they hardly really need the upstairs, so to speak. During the wintertime, they're still doing very well. It's just that you're not going to be outdoors.
So, here's the, the question, the real question is, if 85 is 100 and there's 100 seats right now, maybe God knows how many cars are associated, but certainly not 25. It's much more than that. Where all the cars go? Because they're not parking in those spots, right? They must be put somewhere. Not everyone's parking in those spots because some of them are probably used. Do they valet them?
Well, many of the people, I mean, there's that many seats, but many people come together. You know, you're coming with a party of four, you know, party of five, you know, that sort of thing. So, that's all one car. So, you know, I think to, to conclude that, that's, that some of that is dealt with that way or is, is as a result of that sort of thing, I think makes sense. The, so, so I think if you kind of divide by four, so to speak, you might see that that number is a little closer towards...
So, now can the gentleman explain the valet and what they actually do, as opposed to what's on the plan? Thank you.
How you doing, guys? I'm Mike Farrar. I'm the owner at Wood and Fire. As far as the valet, we don't park any of the cars outside the parking lot. So, any, any, you pull right up to the front, your car is being parked in the lot. Anybody else that's parking, they're parking in the municipal lot or on the street and walking to the restaurant.
And if you don't have any more spaces, you tell them, we can't valet park you, we don't have the space.
If we're full on valet, we guide you across the street to the municipal lot or all the streets that are across from the, all the spots across from the bagel store. I mean, Brook Street's pretty much empty. We're really the only establishment that's open after 5 or 6 o'clock at night. So, everything up and down the street is pretty much empty. And a lot of people choose to park on the street because they don't want to valet. It goes both ways.
So, if you're full, you put up a board, or you just tell the people, we're full?
Well, they're, they're standard right in the front, so they'll let them know. And to be honest, we really, we don't have that problem. Cars are coming, cars are going, cars are coming, cars are going. We really haven't really had a problem where we can't say we can't valet cars.
That's amazing.
That's a good point, that not everybody's coming all at the same time. And, and I know you already know this, it's more in a commercial area, and it's not in a residential neighborhood where they're parking on residential streets or...
Right, they're parking on a commercial street.
Is the municipal lot across the street vacant most of the time, or...
After 4 o'clock. Because there's nothing really, there's nothing open. The bank closes, the hair salon closes, the bagel store closes, everybody's pretty, we're the only store open. Within, within that radius, I guess next to 808 Social would be the next closest establishment open after 5 o'clock. And they're all the way up the hill.
Right, so pulling cars out to do the valet thing onto the street doesn't really, doesn't really disrupt traffic because there's...
They pull in, they, the valet will pull the cars up so that we don't create a traffic jam on Brook Street, and then they'll make the turn and start staggering the cars.
And getting them off to get out the cars.
Correct, because we don't want to create a, you know, a backup on Brook Street. So, we pull them in. If we see two or three cars coming in, we'll pull them up as far as we can. Everybody gets out, and then we'll valet the cars.
Good.
Correct.
When Mr. Carenza was here last month, he indicated that, that you have 19 spots, but with them doubling up, we're parking about 30 to 34 cars. Now, we, we saw a plan here that had 25 with the, with the explanation that if you, if you park them a little closer, you might, you might get another couple of rows. Is, do you have a, an opinion as to what number, 25, 30, 34? How many do you...
I personally would say more than 25. I would go closer to the 30 range with the valet.
Mm-hmm. And what about, what about the Chirmelli lot? Because that was referenced, the Chirmelli, Mr. Carenza said Chirmelli lets us use his lot sometimes. He says if you have overflow, park them across the street in my lot.
Sales, auto body, is that what it is?
I have no idea.
And they're done at 6 o'clock?
It's not you. There you go. Okay.
We, we use those spaces for our own personal cars or for the employees' cars, cars that we know that don't have to move. Once they're done at 6 o'clock, 7 o'clock, it's three to four cars that are parked there that are permanent, that we don't have to worry about moving or touching, or, you know, our employees, most of our employees park in the municipal lot across the street.
So, those three spots are used for patrons? So, the employee spots that you pointed out on the other side, those three spots are used for patrons?
On the other side of the building, we don't park, those are for employees as well. But most of the employees' deliveries, you know, that's where we get everything and going right to the basement. Most of our employees park across the street at the municipal lot. I mean, that's where we instruct them to park their car. Our spots are meant for the guests. So, we utilize our parking lot very well. I would go closer to 30, 32 spots with valet.
Are you physically parking them?
No. But I have. But I have.
Right, even though what you drew is what we asked you to do, we appreciate it. We also appreciate that it's...
I mean, obviously, they're drawing it to what the calculations are supposed to be, but in reality, I think there's a wiggle room of, I would say, five to seven cars.
If I actually drew the car itself rather than a parking spot, would you...
Correct. Because you got to imagine that the tires, the tires of a parking space, if you have a car in a parking space, when you're, when you're valeting it, two of the tires of the car next to it are hugging into that space as well because they're going door to door so that they're getting in and they're leaving the space to go out. I mean, I have a much smaller parking lot in my store in Pleasantville and Southern Table in Pleasantville, and we do a ton of cars in there as well. And I get 20 to 25 in those parking lots. And they're a lot smaller and not as deep as what we have here.
Good.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm pretty convinced that parking is going to be accommodated between the on-street parking and what this gentleman said.
Yeah, I'd agree.
You seem to have a pretty good working plan for how to deal with it.
I did, I, you just...
We have multiple, I hate the expense we get back.
Yeah, sure.
We have two to three valet guys working on a Friday and Saturday night as well. In the summertime, we're doing valet and taking that expense Tuesday through Sunday. So, we're valeting cars six days a week almost. Sunday night's really the only night, and in the summer, it, it, we could go to seven days a week. But we have two to three guys working, so it's not, it's a well-oiled machine. It's not like cars are...
Sounds like a good investment because people know they, they can go there and they're going to have their car valeted, and they're not going to have to worry about it.
Exactly, yeah. We don't really have that problem. It's just a luxury that we offer that people can pull up, get out of their car, and get right inside to the restaurant.
And it's not their only restaurant. They have several.
Right, it keeps, it keeps the tables full, right, having people...
Well, it keeps everybody, believe it or not, it keeps the reservations on time. If somebody didn't get a spot in the parking lot, now they got to go park up the block. Their 6:45 reservation became 7 o'clock because we're running.
Right, and it's not...
It just keeps the system moving a lot.
It's good business.
Not good for business to have people...
It's good for business, and it works out better. We don't charge the valet, so it's just...
One way or another, you convinced us, we're good.
Sit down before you do something wrong.
All right. This is still, any more comments from...
No comments here.
Phil, nothing?
No.
You got nothing?
I got nothing. I was quoting Carenzo before, come on.
You had something.
This is still an open public hearing?
I live right there, but it would be a problem if you were hearing about it.
Okay, good.
Okay, they'll park your car anytime. All right, so, there you go. I wasn't implying that, but... Anyway, so I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on this application, two zero dash zero one, one eighteen, Brook.
Second.
Do we have any conditions, or we're good, right?
Let me look at my own notes here. Nope, we do not have any conditions, no.
Wow.
That's probably a record, it's nine twenty-six, nine twenty-seven, and that's the first motion that we've had.
Oh, really? This is stand, right?
We had an open public hearing already, so we didn't...
We're here to serve. So then, without further ado, I make a motion to approve this application, twenty dash zero one, one eighteen, Brook.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good luck, guys.
Thank you very much.
And Mr. Yanacito, you still back there?
Yeah. So I'm closing his eyes.
All right, the last application is... Good night.
Thank you, good night.
Last application is one nine four eight, Thirty Lakeshore Drive.
This is pretty spectacular.
Yes. Out of sight lighting.
And Joe Chermelli is here on this one.
Good evening, my name is John Yanacito. I'm an architect, and I'm representing Mr. and Mrs. Assaloni, the owners of the subject property. We are proposing a new single-family residence located at Thirty Lakeshore Drive. The footprint of the house is highlighted here on the survey. At the front of the house, the new driveway will slope down into a new parking court, which will provide access to a three-car garage, a covered front entry porch, and a covered side entry porch. At the rear of the property, we're proposing, we're proposing a series of retaining walls, which will create a two-tiered outdoor space around a proposed pool with two vanishing edges. The upper outdoor area will provide access to the pool, a pool house, and an outdoor bar barbecue area. The lower outdoor space will provide additional seating area, which will look back at the pool and the cascading water from the vanishing edges of the pool. Also, from that lower outdoor area, there'll be a staircase that leads to the side yard and a basement entrance, and then a staircase at the rear which will provide access to the lake. This is a streetscape drawing showing photographs of the vacant lot and the two adjacent properties. First drawing is the existing condition, streetscape with the existing properties and the vacant lot. And then below here is the proposed, showing the new front facade in relation to the existing properties. This is section two of the lot, showing the relationship between the street elevation and the lake elevation. The site, if you look here, the street slopes down. Well, the new driveway will slope down to the parking court. This is the proposed garage, the proposed residence, and the lot continues sloping down to the lake. And then the two-tiered outdoor spaces with the pool house would be a retaining wall with the railing above. I have some renderings for the exterior views. So this is the front of the house, showing the new driveway, the three-car garage, the proposed residence with the covered porch, and then the sloping site along the side here down to the lake. And then the rear rendering. It's the two-tiered outdoor spaces with the pool and the vanishing edge. This is the upper level, which provides access to the pool and the pool house, the residence beyond, and then stairs down to the side, which would provide an entrance into the basement, and stairs at the rear to provide access to the lake. We have a 3D video showing all the facades, so I'm gonna turn that on now. For some reason, the connection is not working, so the last time we did this, we put it here.
With that?
With the mic?
Hooking it into the...
It didn't work. So I'm gonna do it this way, and then Gary's gonna zoom in on it. This is what we did last time, and it worked, so... It's a little crooked if somebody's...
There you go.
There you go.
Getting a little glare, so maybe move it a little bit.
Yeah, that's good. Better? Okay, so here we go. So this'll just take us around the entire site.
I like the lush jungle that surrounds it.
So here's down the side, the left side of the house. The retaining walls around the pool. From the side, you can step up to the upper deck or the upper outdoor space. And then the lower level, looking back at the pool. Pool house, and then up steps up to the side, on the right side, back up to the driveway. And there's the entrance to the basement on the side. And then back around to the garage. On the exterior materials, the wall surfaces will be a combination of stucco in a pewter finish and stone veneer, which will be a gray stone. The roof surfaces will be asphalt in a charcoal black finish.
Can you just point out where those materials are on one of the elevations?
So on the, so on the elevations, the base of the building will all be stone, and the base of the garage, and all the walls surrounding the courtyard will be stone. And then everything above that would be a stucco finish in a pewter color. The trim boards around the eaves and on the covered porches will be painted azac in a white finish. The roof surfaces will be an asphalt chingle in a charcoal black finish. The windows will be vinyl clad in a black finish. The railings will be metal in a black finish. What else? The gutters will be aluminum in a white finish. Front doors will be fiberglass in a black finish, and the overhead doors will be fiberglass in a black finish. And if we look at the rear, same thing, the base of the building will be stone all the way around. The base of the pool house will be stone. The walls out here will be stucco finish. The lower wall of the pool will be a stone finish. The retaining walls along the sides will be a stucco finish. And that's about it, and all the railings will be black metal.
Is that a human chessboard?
Well, so the reason we did that is to, so we're right at the limits of the coverage. So in order to provide, so this will all be grass on these platforms here. The only totally covered patio would be in this general area. And then this is half-covered, half lawn. And then it's basically a transition from completely solid, half-solid to lawn along the top patio. And then there's a couple of planting beds here. So this was also, the application was presented to the Architectural Review Board on February sixth, and it was approved with one recommendation and additional flowering plants and trees for the landscape plan. And we did submit a revised landscape plan, and I have Mark Benedict with me today, the landscape architect, and he'll go through the landscape plan. We also submitted a drainage plan to Keller Sessions for their review, and they had a couple of minor comments that we're working through, and we'll revise the plans and get them back in. So at that point, I'll bring up Mark.
If I could just ask you about the, about the rear view here and about the green, I guess the lawns, the upper lawn and the lower lawn, which are all contained within the fencing. Do they, these, do these lawns go straight down in terms of the dirt? I mean, there are retaining walls, obviously, built in, but explain them to me.
So this is just gonna all get filled in. So there'll be a retaining wall, which will create these areas of fill for planting grass. This is all filled in also. The only part that actually has access underneath is this general area right here. And I can show you that in a plan view.
That's mechanical equipment for the pool, under there?
It's an entrance, too.
So basically, you would be retaining fill, not retaining existing soil? So you're gonna be filling that area?
Well, the, yeah, because the property slopes away, so we will be using dirt from the...
From the excavation.
Fill in certain areas. So this is, this is a plan of the area beyond the house. So this is the exterior walls at the rear of the house. So this is the chequered part, half-covered, half-lawn. So all this area here is fill. This area here will be accessible from downstairs. As you go down these steps around, you can go under, and it'll be a covered outdoor space that you can access from the basement. So through the basement, you'll be able to access this covered area or exit and come around. This area also, these are new retaining walls, this will all be fill also. But as you step down, so the first floor is at elevation A. This area here is a foot lower than the finished first floor. And then this second area here is five and a half feet lower than the first floor. And then you finally get back down to this, which is actual grade. So these walls here will be about four feet, because you have, this is minus twelve and then minus five and a half, so these walls will be four and a half feet. And then as you come down here, these will be another four and a half foot wall to create that tiered effect down from the first floor.
And those, the retaining walls around the perimeter also act as a pool barrier?
Correct, yeah, so we're gonna, we're gonna utilize the walls and then have a fence on top of the wall. The fence at the top of the wall would basically be a guardrail, so no one falls off the wall. But when you add up the height of the wall plus the fencing, it meets the requirements for a pooling barrier. And then we'll have to put in a couple of self-closing gates so that this whole outdoor tiered level will become part of the pool enclosure. So when you're out here, you'd have to go through a gate in order to get back up to the pool area.
So there's gonna be a gate at the stair?
Probably at the steps, one here and one at the...
The stair off to the lake.
Yeah, one at this stair and one at this stair here. Probably back here also.
And there, okay, got it. Yeah, my question, exactly, also. Did we ask you a question?
Yeah.
Oh, I don't remember what it was.
So at the front of the residence off the street, we wanted to keep it clean. This side of the property is open to the neighbor. There's only a couple of little shrubs here. We're gonna get rid of those and create an evergreen screen with probably arborvitae, since this side is fairly narrow. We want something that's gonna grow tall, but keep this sort of screened off. Because the neighbor's house is pretty close to this, as well as an existing retaining wall from that property. The homeowners are basically on this side of the house, so we want to give them a nice screen. On this side of the property, it's a lot more wild. There's some overgrown white pine and some other shrubs. So we're gonna play with that. We're gonna see if we can keep some of that stuff there, as well as several larger trees in the backyard. But for the front, I'm proposing things like magnolia, southern magnolia, with the evergreen leaves, some colorful plantings underneath, boxwood along these walls and along the front of the house. Keep it clean, neat-looking. And maybe something like hydrangea along with some boxwood on the side of the three-car garage. So again, it's pretty much green, white, some pops of color here and there. Going to the back of the property, same thing. We're gonna retain this hedge straight along here on the left side of the property, and most likely along here too, but we wanna see what we can keep. Going to the back. Our arborvitae hedge will stop somewhere around here, towards the back, just past this wall. There's some great views of the lake down this way, so we want something that's gonna just stay low and give them some evergreen against this property here. Again, this'll probably be a little bit more naturalized on this side of the backyard. And then we've got a fifteen-foot planting back here of native grasses, maybe some vibranium and things like that, just to keep, again, per the regulation, from the lake. Along the bottom edge of this retaining wall here, possibly a mix of some evergreen with some hydrangea for summer color. And again, there's some smaller plantings up top by the pool area. Lots of lawn.
Is there any, there aren't any wetland soils on the property? I know there's a flood zone.
I'm sorry?
Wetland soil.
I don't know if there's any, I don't believe there's any wetlands designation on this property.
Yeah, we don't have any locally, local wetland designations. Yeah, oh, yeah, and Joe has some comments. Yeah, about flood planning issues, right?
Very nice, thank you.
You're welcome. So the whole idea in the back with the tiered outdoor spaces was that, so they can utilize the pool from the first floor level, instead of having to have a deck at the first floor and go down a full flight of stairs to the pool deck. They wanted to have the pool right at the main family room kitchen space to walk out and be able to use the pool, and then just transition back down to the natural grade, back down to the lake. And try to achieve with the retaining walls and a mix of solid surfaces and lawn planting beds.
I had one quick question about the landscape plan. With the grasses along the lakeshore, why are you ending them so abruptly? I mean, I know that you, you know, in the center where the ramp to the wood dock is and the step, is that just to provide access to those features or also for views? Because did you consider sort of integrating access with the grasses? Yeah, rather than just stock them.
Give you an overall idea that we're definitely gonna go fifteen feet out. We can, this is a current dock here, it's gonna have to be replaced, so I wasn't sure if it was gonna have to be moved at all, so I left a little room to... so I left a little room to, to kind of play with it there. But, oh, yeah, we can, if it's, if it's allowed, we can put some, some breaks in through here and there, and then we can naturalize it.
Well, when I'm, I'm talking about not having such a big break in the center there.
Oh, I see, I see.
And, and, and creating access, if, if you're keeping the ramp and you're keeping the step, creating, you know, access through the grasses to those things. But it just, I, I, again, it's just my own personal opinion.
I just wanna make sure they had enough-
I wish that there were a continuous line of the grasses, both for functional reasons, but also just aesthetically, rather than having such a harsh break.
You wanna see it more integrated into this, this space?
Yeah, I think that's right. Because it looks like that width is almost as wide as the pool, that, that break, if you look at it.
I just wanted to make sure they had enough, enough space to, to fish off here, to put their, their boats in here or whatever needs to be done. We can certainly close that up, you know, we can make that, and again, it would be a little bit more-
Still providing access, but maybe a little more integrated with the grasses, okay.
Also, I think it's softening enough a little bit, it won't be a straight line.
Yes, yes, okay, thank you. That was it.
Lot of landscape architects around here.
And then Joe has some comments.
Thanks. So we've reviewed the plans, we have a memo prepared. There's a lot of little comments in here, it's, it's really just a matter of some cleanup details, utility connections, some questions on some of the minor grading. Nothing in here, I expect, would change the plan substantially at all. To your question about wetlands, the lake, Lake Innisfree is a DEC Class B water body. It's not a, a state wetland, but they do regulate it. So any disturbances to the better bank bed or banks of that water body would require a permit, based on what they're doing and, and that clear definition with the existing stone wall at the lake, I doubt that would come into play here, but we just recommended that they get confirmation from the state. It's a, even an email back and forth would, I think, suffice. And as you mentioned, that the lake is a regulated floodplain and floodway with FEMA. That floodplain elevation does extend into the rear yard of the property. Not far, and I think, based on the elevations that, on the plan, and it appears that all their disturbances are beyond the floodplain boundary, but we just ask that that information be shown on the plan so that it's clear, and that's the case. Other than that, we did witness soil testing at the site for the stormwater mitigation system. They demonstrated they have adequate depth and suitable soils for infiltration. They're proposing a fairly substantial system in the rear of the property that will collect all the runoff from the, all the impervious surfaces, the roof, the drives, and they've designed it to mitigate through the 100-year storm.
It's 22.
Yeah, they're, these are smaller, because of the, the available depth that they had, they went with a, these are 100s, I believe, they're, they're smaller units. Typical cul-de-sacs systems that you're probably accustomed to seeing are about two and a half feet high. These are squatter, they're, they're only a foot high, so you needed more, they needed more of them.
I see. Where is the flood line on that map?
It's way down.
Well, maybe, I'm thinking about the property's- Okay. Big house.
It's at 186.
So 22, 30, 30, 30, 30, those are the larger dry wells.
Oh, those are the ones where? But they're shallow.
No, they're actually, I, I take that back, I was, it was another plan I was reviewing by Hudson Engineering that had smaller units.
Yeah, it'll just-
These are the standard, these are the standard two-and-a-half-foot heights.
Okay, all right, let's just do our public hearing on the application number. I make a motion to open the public hearing on application 1948, 30 Lake Shore Drive?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close public hearing on same application, 1948, 30 Lake Shore?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are there, so are there many comments? It sounds like there aren't very many comments left for you to address, correct, Mr. Tremelius?
Number-wise, if you look at it that way-
You have a memo in your application, I'm sure.
All right, I'd hear some more.
14 in total, like, they're, they're very minor.
Okay.
Is there any, you, you've seen the memo with the 14 points?
Yes, and, yeah, we'll address them, I'll, I'll address some of them and, and Hudson Engineer, and we'll address the others, and we'll get all that information on the plans.
Okay, but there's, there's-
And then when we submit it to Joe-
Nothing problematic from your perspective in there?
Yeah, and the other thing, yeah, I mean, a lot of it was, there was a few comments for the, from the, the pool barrier, and I think we'll address that. We're planning to file for the pool as a separate application, and then we'll show all those details, and then we'll just forward everything to Joe's office for, for review.
So then the two conditions are gonna be subject to the final review of those details and any others associated with the project, and subject to the landscaping being built.
I have them written down here, Joe, maybe look for them?
Yes, please. It is getting late.
So, just to be clear, but these are pretty standard. Prior to the issuance of the building permit, the proposed stormwater management plan shall be subject to final review and approval of the town's engineering consultant. This is a little bit redundant, but some of the comments in his memo technically aren't stormwater management, so I said all comments in the Keller Sessions memo dated 2020 shall be addressed to the satisfaction of the town's engineering consultant. This is in one of the memos, but I'm reiterating. The quantities and spacing of all plant materials should be indicated on the landscape plan and plant list. A minimum width of 15 feet for the vegetated buffer adjacent to the lake shall be noted on the landscape plan. They've indicated it's 15 feet, but I just wanna make sure that, that who's ever installing it is aware of that. And then we have our standard prior to the issuance of a CO. The landscape architect shall provide a signed and sealed letter to the building and planning department certifying that the landscape plan has been installed in accordance with the approved plans. Any proposed changes to the landscape plan shall be reviewed by the landscape architect and approved by the building and planning department prior to the installation, and shall be documented in the letter submitted by the landscape architect. You're certainly able to make, you know, substitutions, but just as long as they're reasonable and similar to what you've proposed. And that's it.
So, so, subject to the conditions that Margaret just read off, I make a motion to approve this application, 1948, 30 Lake Shore?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Some of your finest work.
Lot of information.
That's right.
Two-story pool house? Well, it's, it, when you look at the average grade, because the grade drops off there, you, you're gonna, we're gonna have, actually have the pool equipment underneath there. But it's still considered one-story because of the, the average grade.
Can we approve anything?
I think, I think we, we have just two?
For the 23rd?
Two what?
Two transcripts or, or minutes.
Oh, I forgot about the- No, you're just, just the one, just the January.
No, what, had, had we approved the October one already?
Um, I think possibly at a meeting that you didn't attend. I'll have to double-check though, but I'm fairly certain.
So all the comments you gave from the meeting have already been approved?
That's okay.
So then, well, I'll make a motion to approve the one that we can, subject to Mr. Nemisak's comments, I'm sure there were comments. So I make a, a motion to approve the minutes of January 23, 2020?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I-
I would make a motion to approve the other one in case we haven't approved it.
Yes, that's fine, and we'll double-check that.
A conditional approval of the minutes of, what?
October 24th.
October 24, 2020, you can't go to this, just you and me?
2019. Second.
Just you and me?
No, I think you can, yeah, he can do it, just let him do it.
You actually legally can, yeah.
He can, we need him to, because we, two of us can't do it.
Are you approved? Okay, so, motion to approve, October 24, 2019?
Minutes, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close the, close the town of East Sister Plan Board meeting of February 27, 2020?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night.
Thank you.